Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Smithfield Town Council Committee to order. It's February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, at three P. M. The first item on the agenda is public comments. I have one person signed up, Mr. Tim Ryan. Mr. Ryan? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ryan.
Yes, sir. You can sit, have your seat.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tim Ryan, one-one-two-two-zero Shelter Cove, Smithfield, Virginia. I'm one of the owners of Red Point Tap House at eight-oh-three South Church. And the reason why I'm here, my business partner Nick Hess, is to request that the town help us to work with VDOT to either change or take down the detour signs that are all up and down South Church between Cypress Creek and the bypass out by Food Line. The detour signs, as they are, confuse folks and I think are causing a lot of people to turn left when you get to Royal Farms there at Battery Park in South Church, or not to come down South Church Street at all. As I just drove down South Church Street from the bypass in, there must be a dozen signs, detour. And it's, if you don't know which way east, west, and south are, because the road's going south at that point, well, depending upon which way you're driving it. But I think it confuses a lot of people. And if you look on Google Maps or any of the other map services, the, it shows that the road is closed. So I even had some friends that I didn't know they were coming into town about a week ago. They came to go to our restaurant, they came to Battery Park in South Church, and they went all the way around town because they thought that they had to detour left, came to Cypress Creek from that side, had to turn around and come all the way back. And again, it's very confusing. And for us as a small business, we've seen a sixteen percent drop just in the last month compared to this time last year. And that's even sort of underestimating, I believe, what we would have had, because we were seeing probably a five to eight percent gain over our month-to-month, you know, compared to last year. So it's been a pretty significant drop. I know in talking to other business owners, particularly the owner Jesse Witten of Q Daddies, he's seen, also seen a pretty good drop. But he's closer to the intersection. For us, we're the last business as you come down towards the Cypress Creek Bridge, and we've seen a significant drop in business. And just the roadside, there's, I mean, if they had spent half as much money on workers to work on the bridge as they spent on signage, you know, down South Church out to the bypass, I mean, there's dozens of signs that really don't even need to be there at all, in my opinion. And there's no, there is no detour if you're going to the right and coming towards town. It's just a normal drive to town. Where the detour is, obviously, as we all know, is coming the other direction. So what we'd ask the town to do and to assist us in, or, you know, at least give us some direction in doing, is to, to work with VDOT to help us to change how that signage is, to make it clear so it doesn't affect our businesses, our business and the businesses of others that are up and down South Church Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I can comment quite a bit to this. Mr. Ryan, I have already begun this process. I've been working with, with Michael and Brandon Griffin, who's a project manager, to at least close down the, the signs that say eastbound. Because I agree with you a hundred percent, there is no detour coming into town. And so the last correspondence I had from Brandon Griffin is that he was reaching out to VDOT with, with town support to have those signs changed. Unfortunately, that's my last, that was a week and a half ago. I think I copied Mr. Hess on, on the email.
Yeah.
To do that. And also, they are the ones that handle the Google Maps, the Apple Maps, the ways getting into town. I believe we have that rectified. If not, let's find it. Is it still not?
It's, it's still that way.
So it was showing closed at, from the old DMV to, to the bridge.
Right.
And I thought we had that changed. Well, I'll reach back out, because I've been working, Brandon Griffin has been great. He's with a Crofton representative for this. And he works directly with VDOT, so he's been really good at this. But if it's still showing that, that direction towards our part of town closed, we'll, we'll reach back out on, on that.
Yeah, I just, you know, when you look at it at a glance, when it shows the red dotted line traffic, you know, if you look on, you know, Bing or whatever it is, you know, traffic incident, et cetera, et cetera, you know, that that road's blocked, it really doesn't need to be there. I mean, if you're going right towards town, it's just as business as usual.
Correct.
And all the detour signs then confuse people, you know, because they don't, at that point, the road is going north and south, and it says, oh, eastbound, southbound, whatever. And most people don't know the difference one way or the other, so they go left. And I'm talking about Battery Park, Royal Farms. Or if you're coming into town and you get to the part where you'd fork to go to South Church.
Right.
You know, and all the detour signs. And I, I don't know that that's hurting anybody on that end of South Church Street, but it certainly is hurting us. So, but I appreciate what you've done so far.
Thanks. Councilman Packer, you gonna get with Mr. Stallings? By the way, I've neglected to indicate, Michael Stallings is attending virtually. He has a, a health issue in his family that precluded him from being here today, but he is here with us in a meeting. So if you, if you and, and if you've started down that road, I don't think it's, you know, it's appropriate or, or helpful for anybody else to get in muddy the water. If y'all can...
Let, let's discuss, I'm happy to do that, but...
Please.
So what, what my request was, the, the two flashing VDOT signs, the big orange ones that say eastbound, closed, if you know what EB even means.
Right, yeah.
That they either be changed or removed. Like, because they don't, you're right, they don't need to say that. Was there additional requests that you wanted to see?
Well, it's just, when you get to the, you know, you go past the flag, I'm just saying, coming from Battery Park is an example. You come to the intersection there at South Church and Battery Park at Royal Farms, and there's a detour sign there that, you know, detour, detour. And, and again, it says, if you're going, what, eastbound, if there's a detour, well...
Is it more than the flashing sign?
Yeah, there's the...
There's like a physical post or something?
Physical sign right there at the stoplight. There's another physical sign on the other side of that same intersection. There's another sign when you merge off of the bypass onto South Church all the way out at Food Line. And, and it's just, again, if you don't know, when you come to that T-intersection at the stoplight there, right there at Town Bank, actually, it, it's confusing, and so people, I believe, are going left.
So Randy, technically, if you get right down to the nitty-gritty of it, there is no detour whatsoever when you're going back this way?
No.
When you're headed westbound towards Surrey.
Right.
There is, there's no detour.
Yeah.
You have to switch lanes a little bit, but there's no detour.
Right.
Right.
Under the definition of detour.
There, there should be no signage on that side. I mean, that, that'd be very common sense-like to have no signage.
Other than the caution when you get approaching the bridge.
Yeah, maybe roadwork ahead or something like that. But other than that, there is no detour on that whole side of town.
Yeah.
You gonna be my liaison and work on that?
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're impacted significantly as well, I know.
I am as well, yeah.
So...
And so on the, on the Apple Maps, so we have Google Maps? Is there, did we notice another one?
It's on the app.
Ways, probably.
Yeah, ways. I know it shows up on Bing. If I open up on Microsoft webpage, it shows up on there.
Like, yesterday I was coming home from Surrey, and it had me go all the way to Food Line to my house, because it said the road was closed. Wait.
Are you using Apple Maps to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we know I was going to get to my house from Surrey.
Judy, did you have a comment?
I, I just, I, I'd be delighted to help you, Randy, because, yeah, I kind of need defense as well.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, yeah, should have been fixed already.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
We will work on it for you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Go ahead, sir.
I went onto VDOT's website, the VDOT five-one-one, and, and they, they are accurate. It, it's showing one green lane, and then it says, but no one uses VDOT five-one-one.
Right.
To navigate.
Or, unless you really zoom in, you can see one lane's open, one lane's closed, but...
Or, or if you're looking for a bridge lift.
Right. So, good.
I understand your concern. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
I only had one person sign up on public comments. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard on public comments? One, once? Twice? All right, next item on the agenda I have are two closed sessions. One is closed session for the purpose of acquisition disposition of public held real property pursuant to section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven-eight-three of the Code of Virginia. And the second is closed session for the purpose of potential litigation pursuant to section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven-eight-eight of the Code of Virginia. Mr. Riddick, you gonna handle that for me?
Yes, sir. There are two matters under potential litigation, not one.
Two under potential litigation? Okay. So do we, in this scenario, need a motion to collectively...
Yeah, just go into closed session for those purposes.
Okay. Well, we're gonna need a motion and a second, and a vote.
I make a motion, we go into closed session for number one and number two.
Second.
Pursuant of acquisitions and...
Briefing, potential litigation. Yes.
Is there a second motion?
There's a second.
Second by Mr. Gibbs. Further discussion? Call the question, please, ma'am.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Yes. We will be in closed session till further notice. I usually say it won't be long. I'm not gonna make that promise this time, but it shouldn't be too long, I would think. No. I'm. The prices of. I don't want. That person. I don't know. We. All. You know. No. Are they using? You're kind of scared. You didn't have a. Yeah. I mean. I don't. I would have done. We did. We have three men. Well, what was it? She went up. Oh. Oh. I'm. Oh. Wow. I'm not. They're saying. I don't really. About. I think. Three eighty five. So she. But they had pointed out. Get it. You need for. I'm not. I did with. I'm not. Say everything. Well, they're the same people. It's the same thing. It's that. Right. I don't know. Like you have. For. It's kind of. I really. Why? I mean. That's. They. I love. See. You'll. So. And gentlemen, ladies. So. Yeah. Sometimes. I mean. It's. It's not bad. I'm. I'm. It's. Yes. We don't. We don't. Nice. It's. Here's some. Ladies. Um. I really. Fourth. It has. Right. Cause. There we go. There we go. Come on. And. I hope. We're down. He. I. I didn't. Says about six. He said. He had one shift. I didn't. He had. I had all I had. Shit. And I. Why don't. I just. It's. Hmm. I do. I have. Please. And we. We. I don't know. This number. Do you have? Do you? There's. Hey, that's. Why? Can you? Why? I'm trying to. Do you know? Like. How many women is there? Well, it's nice. It's. It's. Part. They're. They're. Well, a lot of people. They're. Well, I'm. I understand. Part. And. You got the. Single. Go. Have. You. He had nothing else. And then. We can retire. Um. Really. Never. Well. So. You believe it. I don't. Just. She. I mean. I do. I'm. How? She goes. Can you? Everyone. So. She's. Um. I'm. Oh. Yeah. I'm sitting here. I won't. What's that? I'm. You could. I'm like. Wow. So. That's. So. I come out. It's perfect. How are you like? That's. Or. We. I solve. And. The higher. Well. Just. How can you? You decide. You have. You have. So. And. Just. Markets. Come in. You had. Two. It's. Two. Two hour breaks. You learn. Six hour break. When you're six hour. And what you up. What we're talking about. Was it two to five hours ago? Hmm? Was it two to five hours ago? You said. Two. One. Six. And. I think that. Two is an hour. Definitely. Yep. You take. That. But it followed. It followed. Our. Because God. Same. This. It was just like you were. And. You had to say. That. What's in.
Yes.
And. I'm. That's.
Same. Anything. For.
The. Police.
Okay. We. Have. My. House. Didn't. I'm. Just.
I'm. See. It's. We. So. I don't know. I can't understand. I forgot. I mean. Well, I understand. This. This is not. Anyway. Not. I can't. Understand. Where she's at. And I can't hear. It's. Real. Quick. Fast. And quiet.
This.
What? Next. We got two of us. Down. Come work. I understand. Too much. So. I don't. How much? It's just two. Two. Four. That's possibly not good. We asked it to be. Friends. Or my. Country being used. Well. For my thumbs.
Well, I only got one bar.
Sorry. Yeah.
I'm going to wait for him.
One bar. Of course. Internet here or?
For my phone. I don't have the internet connected. I got two. Whoa.
Are you? You know, there's. Internet here.
Try it. Sign into it. I couldn't give you the work.
Let me bring my. I'm head over.
Okay. Send this one. A V or?
You don't want A V. That's. Then that's private one. Yes.
I can control cameras.
It's gonna squash me. Okay. Good. All right. Is that iPhone?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. I'm. And we should. All. This. All right. How do we go to the Smithville Center? We. So like get there. I'll share the password. It looks. Okay. And then go out and go back in. Just. That's. It's center. Two six. All the way.
Whoops. What do I got?
So did it? You left.
Center two six.
Yeah. Oh. Okay.
I'm.
Yeah.
And. Can I? Oh.
Okay.
Let me try that.
Can you use a small thing?
Uh huh. Did you?
I don't know. And then you got a full. It's. I thought he was. K E B. Well, that is pretty gross. You know, just squashed. We were asking. And that. That. Consistent.
It's still thinking.
Still thinking.
Yes. I think that's. The. But what's the spending thing?
It works. It sounds good.
Yeah. Should be alright.
Hmm. That's. All.
Yeah. It's just.
That's. I don't like the place.
I don't know why.
No, that's okay.
Should be alright.
Yeah.
I'll try to do it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Don't worry. My daughter thinks it's true. Okay. So this is weekend, right? Next weekend. Yeah. Thank you.
And that's. On. Absolutely.
I won't. I'm gonna sell it outside.
Everybody's supposed to. I think people. Come here for a Smithville food test.
Oh. Thank you.
Supposed to have three. Supposed to have the screen. Internet. And then the business one. And. Local. We're. Uh. We're upgrading soon.
Yeah.
New projector. And microphones. You put. Well. Probably. Hand you the bill.
Where are you gonna put it?
That's the same. And it's gonna be the same. There's a projector right there. But it's. Ten fifteen years old. So. And then. This is one of those. Right. And we're getting. Between the lights. Just. Yeah. This is gonna be. So it'll be. High definition. Or. Again, it's something. You have to. Five. For five years. But. Every ten year. And it'll be.
That's cool.
Wireless. You're. I couldn't. Like if you wanted to share your. Report from your phone.
Oh, I love that.
You know, the airplane screen sharing.
That's.
Yeah. I was just looking at. And then I'll. I mean. Four hour. Yeah. They're pretty good size. But. I don't know. Thank you. They're needed.
Yep. Absolutely.
You know what? No, sir. Cause. I'm. Just covering for Alan. Uh. Just. Sorry. You hear you. You're. You're. I mean. And. Eddie. Earths. Yeah. It's you. Yeah. I would get. What's your order? Just like. Well. All the. All the. Uh. The. You know, cups and the. And the coolers. You know. All the first come out with. They're lasting like seven. They. They. Brinkley. Ice. All day. Then about to make the coffee. And they kept the prices up. They're. I think. And new colors. All the time. And maybe some new stuff. Like. Chairs. I have a chair. Like. It's called. Colored. What? But it's. If you're a person that goes out and you. You're gone. And order one or two days. Or a little fish. There.
Oh.
You're. You're. Your fish. And then. And it's kind of. And that's. Uh. It's. But it's. Seizable. What they say. It's. Cheap. That's what I mean. I mean. Maybe. Something like that keeps my. My coffee. I don't. You know. But. Until I'm done. Isn't that? You know. I think. It's even. I think. Now. Interesting. If you've been out for. You know. For thirty five minutes. If you had a kick in the door. That's in there. You were. So. Air. Other. Like. Over. Like. I would say. A little too good. Or. It's. Sort of. Ice packs. Just. So. You were there. Since you got. That. So. You were there. With. Or. Some of the. Or. Yeah. Right. Well, I. I saw. Work. Working. So. Music. Such a special. And I have to trade all that. Some of the games. That. They're. They have to do. That's. There. Ice packs. Or. Pretty. So. Okay. Well, we have. That. That's like. Well, Michael. Michael. Does. Not. Back. Yeah. We. Went. Have. A. Cat. Uh. Sid. And so. Come out. You know. Grab some of it. And I just. I'm a packet. Cup. Well, that's for. That's for the day. What was? Basically. You have four hours. Yeah. Take. And get from my dad's. Three. Could be. Somewhere. Like six days. Yeah. And. Yeah. That's. But you're out. So. So. Stop. You know. All. You. My. Woman is. I think. It's an R B. And my wife. Her. She's. Being in a hotel. Where. You have to call down. Fire. Yeah. I'm. I'm. Whether on that. That. Yeah. This week. Right. Yeah. So. It's. So. And. I'm. Actually. Yeah. I would. But. Also. Market. Time. I mean. So. That's all. So. That's. But. About. What? You do. I mean. Um. Really. Do you? Well. Um. I don't. Need. More. Yeah. So. We'll. Probably. Or. Probably. But. I'm like. I go. Looking. So. We don't have. So. This is. We. Project. And this is. This is. The. And. And. Ask. And. That. Because. It's. Interested. In. And it is. That. Who's. That? Okay. I had. Very. Good. Which. I'm. The. We. Serpent. Situation. We're. Bringing. Three. So. There's. A. Say. That. Yes. 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 So. Yes. Except. Well. We. Also. The. That's. That. All. Change now. I. I don't. We can't have. TV. That. More. Yeah. More. You know. We. lost. Certainly. I. But. Why? If. You. Or. Our. Stuff. That. Started. There. I'm. Just. I just. Want. And that's. I didn't say. It's. We have to go. It's. Come. You. And. Target. Today. And then take it somewhere else. Like this. On. Yes. Used it. On. You know. I was. Work. Definitely. I said. For. So. Just. And that. We're. Asking. The. Of. Now. There's. Very. And. So. Our. Yes. Here. Yeah. Can you? Because. All. The. Next. But. What? But. You. And. You know. Say. It's. Or. And. Right. Well. Mars. Mark. Right. You want. I mean. Everyone. It's. Well. You want. Sure. And what happens? I lost. You. Didn't. You know. You can. Forty five. My. Love. You said. What? That. What? That's. Well. We don't. Know. Last time. It's. Well. We lost. And. I see. Oh. That's an insurance. Did it happen? Oh. I mean. It was on job. You got. It over. For. Share. Part. You find. Sam. Sam. That's. Were you? I don't. Hmm? Yeah. Yeah. Oh. It happened. I spent. It's. Two months. And you find. I'm. An. Person. That. It's.
We have.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
You are.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Six minerals that I had four people work to.
You got on the ground.
Oh, four people.
Three of them.
Sixteen.
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 Yeah, sixteen.
Either one, three of them now, let's do it just like.
And I'm also.
I'm a primary community.
Okay, you said.
So.
I.
Is that.
Is that.
Get up.
We will be kings of paper.
Get up.
Now, the visibility is often.
I don't know.
I know.
Yeah.
Twenty second.
Three hours later.
I'll.
I'm done.
I don't.
Well, this. Are you still on camera?
Yeah.
Run those.
The.
And the thing is, I want to have the cameras when it's all.
So.
Doctor Collins, Chris Collins.
You can bring us in.
Bill, you did a lot of that.
You and I.
And we're talking.
I brought.
Who were the chaos?
They took.
How those. Yeah. I hear we had post session. I hear you're in the back room.
I hear.
Looking to the fires with my.
Really just.
She was walking correct. Hey, Leslie, come over here and talk with us. He comes up with us.
Good.
There you go.
You got.
Hey, she's on her.
Yeah.
She does.
She does.
Why do you have.
I mean.
She's.
She.
Oh, we gotta work on that.
Stop.
John.
Jesus.
She.
I think.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't.
Very, very, very.
What if this like.
Chat.
Okay.
Feels good, man.
Feels good.
It'll be all right.
I'm metal.
Hmm. Big reds.
Where's.
I got.
It just got a little warm in there.
Just wait, Mr. Brooks.
Right sound.
After this, Mr. Mayor, I gotta go. I don't think this. I'm done for a while. I think y'all got plenty to dig.
Air conditioner's working. We do. I'm waiting on. Waiting on that.
Hmm.
Yeah.
If that threshold there will be.
Wrong. I know.
Ooh, I think you cut off maybe. Somebody found my phone staff.
I'd like to reconvene the February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four meeting of Smithfield Town Council Committee.
Mr. Mayor.
Mister Riddick.
We need a motion that during the closed session, there was only a discussion of, number one, the acquisition or disposition of real property held for public purposes pursuant to two point two dash three seven one one A three and briefing by legal counsel as to actual potential litigation pursuant to two point two dash three seven one one A seven.
So move. A motion.
So move.
Mister Smith.
Mission made by Mister Smith, sir. Second.
Second.
Second, Bob. Mister Collins.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Public Safety Committee Operational Updates, Smithfield Police Department. Chief Howell. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
This is your. This is your committee, sir.
And members of council. You have received our activity report for the month of January. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have pertaining to that activity report. If there aren't any informal operational updates, we recently, over the course of the weekend, had a commercial break-in at Ace Hardware in eight hundred block of West Main Street. Suspect threw a piece of wood through the door and gained entry and left with some, a few items that were easily accessible from the door. We don't have any active leads at this point, but we are still looking and investigating that. In the other form of operational updates on March twelfth, which is right around the corner, we will hold our accreditation assessment. We will have assessors coming in on the twelfth, and we'll be having dinner at Smithfield Station, and you all should have received an invitation for that dinner. We look forward to seeing you all there for that dinner as the assessors come. We're hoping to have a good time. Some of the assessors came on February fourteenth to do a mock assessment. Our files were in good condition, so we're looking forward for that endeavor. Also, during the month of January, February, well, actually, February, we met with a gentleman by the name of Adrian Cook, who is from the city of New Penneus, and we're looking to partner with him. His organization is called Love, and that has let our voices empower, and that is a program for at-risk kids. We're trying to bring a program here in the town to help kids that are having some problems before they get into the juvenile system. It's not only kids, but it also will work for adults. We are looking to partner with them, and so that they will be bringing some programs over that would benefit the community. Also, in the form of the last form of operational update, I would have Sergeant McGowan to come forward. Just to share. Just to share with members of council, we have received an award for the National Night Out, in which we placed for the events that we had for our National Night Out, and I just wanted to be able to show the award to council. And so this is a collective effort from the men and women of the organization and the community, so we are very happy about that.
We congratulate you on that. That's quite an honor, and we really certainly appreciate it.
And the last thing is that we are in your packets. There is a application or a resolution for the Certified Crime Prevention Program. We need that resolution signed so that we can seek. Recertified, to be recertified as a certified crime prevention community. Some of the benefits are that because we're a certified crime prevention community, we get first preference at any of the state grants that we may be applying for. It gives us also a reduction on any insurance, so there are some benefits to being a certified crime prevention community. So as soon as we can get that resolution signed and get it to Richmond, we will begin to start the process of being recertified.
Do you have a copy of that resolution? I don't.
It was in the back.
Think, well, I.
And Chief, I do have to say, Sergeant, you're here, and I would have brought the book back to you. This is not a small feat for the certification.
No, sir, it's not.
There are twelve cores and seven options that they go through, and they, the cores, there are no, there is no negotiation. They have to do those. If you don't meet them, then you don't get certification, so this is actually a big kudos to the department.
Okay, in order for the resolution to be adopted, it has to be adopted by council, so I'll read the resolution. The chair will entertain a motion. We can't vote today.
Can't do it today.
All right. It'll be, all right, do me a favor. Get this back to me on council. Chief, who will adopt it on council day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And that will conclude in operational updates. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I failed to get back to that second meeting that you all had with Cook.
Yes.
Did Michael attend that second meeting?
The second meeting we had with Mister Cook, we invited Mister Cook to our staff meeting.
Right.
Where the entire staff met Mister Cook and heard of the program, and I, there were several questions afterwards, and he did leave cart. In fact, several officers mentioned they knew of some potential candidates for the program, so we are looking forward to.
Potential candidates from our.
From our community, yes, that would stand to be in benefit.
So you and Michael. I don't mean you and Michael. We made a decision.
I was not at that meeting. I was.
Okay, you were not at the meeting.
Government Management Association Conference.
Because I also sent you and Michael an email about a program within the New Penneus school system, and I had also reached out to the grades in our county public schools. My only concern from his presentation, and I realize this with at-risk students.
Yes.
But it seems as though it's after the fact, and I would like us to, if we're gonna make a commitment to work with students, I would prefer us working with some type of empowerment program to prevent the after fact. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Uh, so before we make a commitment with that, I would like us to do some further investigation into what type of program would be best for our kids.
Okay, and actually, during the staff meeting, that question was posed, and they do, they work it both ways. They do preventive and after the fact, after child has gotten involved in the justice system.
So you feel comfortable with the presentation?
One of the things that I plan to do is to coordinate with them and actually visit, do an onsite visit when they're in the school system, in the city of New Penneus, so I can have firsthand look at it, also to meet with the chief of police, with the city of New Penneus and or Hampton to, because they are working in those communities. And I do feel that if they are in those communities and they are working along with the police department, that they have been vetted to a certain degree, and that it, if it's working for the city of New Penneus and Hampton, we don't have the same volume, but any benefit here, any involvement here, I think, would be an asset and definitely benefit to the community.
Last question is, are we partnering with the sheriff's department? Because currently, we don't have really any active role per se in our schools.
We plan to reach out to the sheriff's office and bring them on board to include them in any decisions that we are making. However, that contact has not been made as of yet. I did reach out to the sheriff as of last week, but we have not sat down to meet specifically in reference to this particular item.
Any other questions? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Should we move on to Mister Smith? Volunteer Fire Department.
I'm Jeff Smith, Smithfield Volunteer Fire Department, one of the assistant chiefs. Our run for December, we had eighty-three runs. In January, we had ninety-four. We had three working fires this year already. We had one in Carrollton, a commercial structure fire, a residential fire in Rushmere, and one in Smithfield. We want to invite y'all, council members, who want to come to our truck class this weekend, March first, second, and third. It'll be held Friday at the Smithfield Center, and Saturday and Sunday up at the lot on South Church Street across from McDonald's. If anybody wanted to come, just please contact me. I'll take you up there for a tour. You can see what we do and how we train and everything to further educate the young firefighters around here. And a lot of the firefighters come from all over the country to teach the class, and we have a lot of paid firefighters come take the class too, to learn about firefighting. Also, in January, the Smithfield Volunteer Fire Department put Engine Fifty into service now. We have our newest engine in service, and we are putting a new brush truck on order to hopefully have next January. And also, Chief, want me to thank y'all for coming to the banquet, who's able to make it, and we join it with Smithfield Highway Rescue Squad Two. If you have any questions, just, I'm feeling asked.
I have, well, I'll go and let you finish. I have a question. So, Mister Carroll, you wanna go ahead and?
Okay. Um, yeah, just to recap, for those who didn't make the banquet, first of all, we had another very successful, second time we've done a joint banquet. We had almost a hundred and seventy-five folks at the event for both fire and EMS and all the representatives around, so thank you all for those that came. You know, if you weren't there, the recap from last year was you ran twenty-seven hundred and forty-nine total EMS calls out of the station. The volunteer hours were about ninety-five hundred. So for those of you who may or may not be familiar, come total with the staffing in the county, we staff five ALS amelices every day with a combination of career and volunteer staff, all qualified and trained the same. We just started another EMT class in January. That class has about twenty-one folks in it. We teach that on the college semester every year, so we're glad that class is almost full. We recognize a couple of people at our banquet, and I'll just recap them real quick, because we're especially proud that our VLS Provider of the Year, which is based in life support provider of the year, is the son of Mayor Bowman, which was Connor Bowman. He's a student at UVA, and Connor gives an excessive, a lot of time to the rescue squad for calls and standbys and other things, and we're very, very proud to have him. The two other people, three other people we recognize every year were ALS Provider of the Year, which was Frank Berg. Frank is shortly to come out of the military after a long active career in the military and is actually in that transition now between the six months of coming out, working for CHKD and a transport environment. And then we recognized our two squad people of the year, which were Lori Taylor, who is in charge of all our recruitment membership, probably the single most important thing we do, second only to Mindy Ellis, who's in charge of all our training, which is training, which is absolutely the most important thing we do. So, you know, we were proud to recognize all those folks in our banquet this year. Along with the operational updates, you know, things are going very well in cooperation with the county. We provided the medic, but the county has placed the medic in service up at Rushmere Fire Station to decrease response times in that fire district. That ambulance will come out, comes out of our station every morning, is in service for the daytime hours, twelve hours, eight to eight, and the reason that it comes out of our station is we, our plan is to continue to rotate that medic through the fleet so it doesn't get less or more mileage than any other, any other piece of equipment in the county. So fleet rotation is really important when amelices are now north of three hundred thousand dollars for replacement and three years delivery time. We're trying to get two amelices ordered now from the county standpoint, and we're looking at three years to get them. Next week is our big week for office EMS inspection. That's the time every, every two years that we go through an inspection with the office EMS to make sure that records are in shape, that training is in shape, and that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, so they'll be in the county next week, probably for most of the week, doing EMS inspection amongst every agency in the county. Smithfield Fire is licensed under our agency license, so when they check our amelices, they go through and check their records, their personnel records, and their vehicle records also. And then the last thing I want to address is, I think, from our standpoint, from public safety, from EMS and fire standpoint, the Smithfield Station Bridge Project, while it is frustrating, I'm sure, for some at times, has worked very well for us for responses to that area. The one-way traffic, we continue to maintain that is the only way to do that successfully for public safety, so it has worked very well for us.
My other question comes from education, just how you guys do something. So you mentioned three years for medic, three hundred thousand dollars, and new equipment come online. How do you guys do the planning, or when do, when do, when can we learn about the planning for your out years? All the, talking about the growth in Smithfield and what's going on, I'm just curious. I've talked to people in the department where, you know, equipment, medics, firefighters, everything, everything is just at a stretched capacity. If anything ever happens on one side, that takes a lot of capacity away. If anything ever happens on the other side, how does it respond? So how does that planning happen, especially in the out years with the growth that potentially is or is not coming?
So, you know, we, as, and I'll speak for us in Smithfield Fire, we have set a ninety-second goal out the door on all firing EMS calls, ninety percent of the time between our two stations, so that's how we arrive at staffing levels. As far as apparatus, that's done through the county CIP plan. We've now gone to a scoring system, which is more, much more equitable across the county as far as replacing apparatus. But prior to the scoring system, it was replaced strictly on basically a yearly calculation, so a fire truck would get replaced at twenty or twenty-five years, a medic would get replaced at ten to fifteen years. The scoring process that Chief Winley has developed really gives us more equitability in replacement, especially when it comes to high-mileage medics, because our medics, three of our medics right now, or two of our medics right now, pushing two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand miles. And I'll tell you that because of supply, the medic that's gonna be remounted next is behind schedule, will be behind schedule, because traditionally, prior to COVID, we could order an ambulance and have it in nine months. Now we order an ambulance and it's three years. So we have, I think we have a very equitable and feasible replacement plan. We just gotta get through these first two or three years of getting caught back up on equipment.
And you okay with staffing and?
We are. We are very, very, very fortunate with the career staff that we have in the county and the excellent people that we have working for us. People come to work for us because we are probably one of the few agencies in the region that don't do mandatory overtime yet. We've been able to avoid that because we still supplement a lot of shifts with volunteers when it's needed. You know, if we have a career provider call out, we put that shift out to everybody, so it's either another provider picks it up. We still incorporate a lot of part-time people in our employment system, so the medic in Rushmere are probably daily is staffed by part-time folks, or volunteer picks up a shift at one of our stations, and we send somebody on that medic. So that, those three, full-time, part-time, and volunteer combined is what's available to allow us to maintain and not go into mandatory overtime and keep what we think is adequate staffing. And I misspoke. We're actually up to six medic staff daily in the county now.
Counselor McCallens, I know City of Suffolk is on mandatory overtime.
Are they really?
Yes, they are. Sure.
And Mister Smith, what about your, from your perspective?
Oh, we manage, and we are constantly getting new members in. Like I said, we're strictly all volunteer. We have one paid guy during the day to drive the fire truck, to make sure we have it, get it out the door, but we hold, we hold our own right now. And we have a lot of career vol, career people, the volunteers here, because they like to do the fire department side of it only. They get burned out from the medic side on the career staff. Brian can evaluate that, and plus the mandatory overtime at all the other career cities, so they like coming here and they can do what they like to do best.
I'm glad you answered the question, Mister Collins, because I'll tell you, I've seen it through the years. As a matter of fact, in nineteen eighty-eight, I was first lieutenant with the rescue squad, so I ran the rescue squad for a year before I became, or eighty-seven, before I became chief deputy. And I, I'll tell you, the, what we've gone through in the number of years as far as the training requirements, as far as the advancement equipment things and having to keep up with that learning curve, these guys are doing a marvelous job, and they really, really, really deserve our total support. They're doing.
Absolutely, and that leads to where the question comes from.
Yes, sir.
You know, trying to look out so many years, you know, we have to get ahead of the curve now. This is not something that you can just call up and order, like you said, a medic or even a fire truck.
A fire engine now is four years out, and a ladder truck is five.
I get it.
And personnel, I mean, I'm hearing that from around the area. Personnel, they're not easy to come from, and being a whole volunteer force, you know, makes it even more difficult.
Well, we're very fortunate. I mean, you know, you look at the civic clubs, some civic clubs are doing pretty well, but other civic clubs, this, the sense of volunteerism in the United States has been kind of on a decline, but you look at these guys, and I'll tell you, I know firsthand why it is the way it is, and that is because they, they do such a good job from a leadership perspective, and the folks that come here to serve know they're gonna be serving on pretty good equipment all the time. We, we need to keep that up, whether it's police, fire, EMS, any of them.
If I had, you know, if I had one recruitment retention item I'd like to conquer, it would be getting in the schools, the high school systems with public safety as core classes, like they teach ag, and they teach welding, and they teach culinary, you know. If you could do fire EMS in the high school systems, our big recruitment is college, and that's what we focus on, but if we could get back in the high schools, I think that would be a really good building source for all of us.
Because City of Hampton, they do New Horizons there, does the firefighter one and two class and EMTB there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because Carrollton Assistant Chief is the instructor over there.
I know they went through that program, really great program.
You know, it gets the young generation on a track if they want to go that way. They start here early, and you get a lot more volunteers in your, around your area here. You know, as a volunteer, I ran two hundred and eighty-six calls last year by myself. It takes a lot out of you.
Takes, yes. Anything else from you, Will?
I see Will Drury back there with EMS. Do you have anything, Will? You're good? Okay.
Oh, one last thing is, if you come see our truck school, you'll see why we get a lot of the volunteers here. It's caused the training we do, the extraitraining, the more intense of who went into fires and vehicle extrication where they just get the basics, get the city to start with, and it's up on yours own to further your advancement, and that's why a lot of cities send them over here, and a lot of our guys learned how to do all of it.
That's good. Yeah, I've heard that from people telling me that, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Mister Mayor, just also, thank you to the town for the support, and the town just helped us purchase a weightlifting system we put in the building. We certainly appreciate that. You know, we try to provide health awareness in many sources. We have a workout room in both stations, a lot of good equipment, and we appreciate all your support.
Well, everything that you do from a weight perspective also helps us down the road. Where's my HR person? road. Where's my HR person? She'll tell you. We keep you in shape, we avoid heart attacks if you want to do it. Anyway, but thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is, uh, oh, we slipped up. Finance, members Pack, Smith, and Vice Mayor Butler.
You still have item number four.
Did I miss it?
The resolution was pushed to.
That was the resolution.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, got it. Right, we did that earlier. All right. I'll go ahead and open up the finance committee with myself being the chair, and Councilwoman Butler and Councilman Smith joining me on this committee. We'll start off with our annual audit report for fiscal year 2223 by James Gil of Robinson Farmer Cox and his associate, Ms. Ross.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So we were engaged to audit the financial records for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. The first thing that I'd like to kind of talk about is the communication with those charged with governance. This is a separate letter from the audit firm to the governing body, and this details a few things, one of which is management versus auditor responsibilities. Thank you. Management is responsible for appropriate accounting policies, including implementation of new standards. And there, there were no new standards implemented for fiscal year 2023. Management is responsible for maintaining records sufficient to audit, maintaining a system of internal controls and further review or preparation of the financial statements. And we, the auditors, are responsible for auditing documents, testing controls, verifying appropriate application of accounting principles, and opining on the financial statements. It also talks about accounting estimates. Accounting estimates are generally necessary for all financial statements. The most significant use of estimates in the financial statements were the estimate of depreciable lives on the long-term or fixed assets. The estimates related to the measurement of pension and OPEB liabilities based on actuarial studies performed by a third party, as well as the estimate of the, of the allowance for uncollectible property tax revenue. This letter would also detail any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Examples of potential difficulties include incomplete documentation, access denied to documentation, or audit evidence, or an incomplete system of internal controls over financial reporting. There were no difficulties noted during the course of the audit. It also discusses corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Most audits include proposed audit adjustments. Corrected misstatements would be those adjustments that are proposed and included in the financial statements, and uncorrected misstatements are material audit adjustments proposed to the financial records that were not recorded by management. Professional standards require that we disclose the nature of uncorrected misstatements, and there were no uncorrected misstatements for fiscal year 2023. Management consultations with other independent auditors. So this would be similar to opinion shopping or obtaining a second opinion from a different firm. Professional standards require that we disclose to the governing body any knowledge of management consulting a second opinion or a second audit firm, and we have no such knowledge. Audit findings. Professional standards require that we disclose the nature of any audit findings and management's response to those findings. And in summary, there were no audit findings as a result of the 23 financial statement audit. So now I'd like to talk about the annual comprehensive financial report. The independent auditor's report is on page six through eight of the document. This is the first of three reports issued by our audit firm contained in the report document, and we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. And our report is dated December 11, 2023. Some financial highlights. Ending fund balance for the general fund was about $12.7 million, which includes unassigned fund balance of about $12 million. And this is an increase in total fund balance of about $2 million over the prior year for the general fund. The independent auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting, this could be found on page 110 and 111. This report is a required compliance report for governmental agencies, and this report, if applicable, would describe any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control and processes over financial reporting. No significant deficiencies or material weaknesses needed to be disclosed for fiscal year 2023. And finally, the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program and on internal control over compliance required by the Uniform Guidance. It's page 112 through 114. This report is required for localities undergoing a single audit, which is generally required for governmental entities expending more than $750,000 of federal financial assistance, federal financial assistance in a given fiscal year. This report, if applicable, would describe noncompliance with federal program requirements, and there were no such instances for fiscal year 2023. So that concludes my remarks, and I just want to thank Ms. Ross and the finance staff for helping us during our audit. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gil. In summary, we've had sound financial management and successful 2223. Would you agree?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in the audit report that you feel should be brought to our attention?
No, not in particular.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gil?
Doesn't, but thank you.
You bet. Thank you, sir. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Great. And part of what James mentioned, he was talking a little bit about internal controls, and that's one of the things that I'm, I'm going to be working on with my group. We've done procedures, and we're working on procedures as we go along, and we'll share that with them when we're done. And we've also had the audit debrief meeting, so that we have our plan going forward, so it won't be such a scramble to find them anything, and we'll feel more confident about what we give them versus, I hope this is right. Okay, there you go. All right, we'll jump in and talk about the financial statements. You have your packet, and this is of January 31. The details of everything that are in here in the footnotes, and if you have questions in particular that aren't addressed in the footnotes, let me know, and I'll get back to you with that. I don't want to go over each line because it's about 25 pages long. So there you go. All right, we'll talk about the revenue. We're billing the second half in the spring for the real estate. Collections to date are $1,069,692, or 49.87% of our budget. Personal property, if you look at page two of your packet, personal property was due on December the 5th. To date, collected is $977,950, and that is tracking at 87.51% of our budget, which is like 1% lower than the prior year. So, sales tax, we'll jump down to sales tax, and that is also on page two. As we mentioned earlier, Alawite sends a sales tax to us, and they do it via check. We're still working on getting that done electronically. They do send it to us, and they will give us a date for the check, like September, but we don't really think it's for September because it comes late. So we're trying to work on the communication with them to get that straight. Right now, to date, Munis is showing us, and that is of today, $329,796 collected on sales tax. If we drop down to utility tax, right now it's 40% of what we've budgeted for, which is tracking with what we did in the prior year. Business license will go out very soon, if we talk about that. We're working on a couple of things with Munis. I'm not really confident that we're going to be able to send out business license via Munis, so we'll send it out the way we've been doing it for a while, which was with the bright system, and we hope to get those out the door in the next few days. We'll talk about expenditures briefly. The, everything is noted in the footnotes after each section about how the expenditures are tracking. So if you again have any questions with that, our overall expenditures are 46.9, 9% of budget, and we are still below what our revenue is, which is really what we want to have. I projected out for the rest of the year to see where we were, and I think our expenditures will be exactly in line with what was budgeted. Hopefully, the revenue will be just a little bit higher. I think it's going to be at 111%. So hopefully, that's correct. If it's not, I'll adjust it. Let's see what else I want to talk to you about. Okay, I did include a little snippet of where our debt is, and right now, our debt is at $4.368,685 million. And each month, as you're aware, we pay down the line of, the line that we have with Town Bank. Let's see. We can, if nobody has any questions, we'll jump into talking about the cash balances. Is that good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Before I start talking about cash balances, I will talk about briefly the RFP for banking services, and we're working on that. We should have a copy of it to you, Councilman Pack, by the end of the week, if everything goes well and nothing happens in between now and then. The mayor and I were talking about the payroll company, and it just made me think. I will include payroll services in our RFP, because sometimes the banks do that too, just to see what they can provide.
I definitely want them included in the RFP. A little background on it, I received my W-2 form from the town and noted that no federal nor state taxes had been taken out of it last year when I had, in fact, filled out a W-4 form. Ms. Ross contacted the company, and some of the comments that she received I deemed to be highly unprofessional and non-responsive. So I've asked Ms. Ross if there are other companies that can serve our needs in a more professional manner, and I'll be looking forward to seeing what results from the, from the RFP aspect of it. Needless to say, I'm, I'm, I'm very displeased that they took the assumption that that was, and I would presume that that was the only income that I would have, that these gentlemen and ladies would have, and do the taxes based on that because it didn't exceed the standard deduction. And I think that's likely what happened. You can't make that assumption when you're dealing with money. So I'm very displeased with it. I'm very displeased also with the way that they conducted themselves in interacting with you based on the notes that you provided me. So yes, I'm looking for, greatly looking forward to that aspect of the RFP. Thank you.
Keep working on that.
I will, I'll add to that, Mayor Bowman, that if, in fact, we do decide to go with a different payroll company, the task is not a simple one, assumesly going from one to another. I, I just completed it, and it, and it's, and it's not just the seven of us sitting up here, it's our employers, our employees out there. It is a tremendous task for everybody, because you have lots to do and a lot of history to transfer. I mean, it is, it is a significant cha, task to change payroll company.
I asked Ms. Ross specifically that because I do not want to burden her over one or two potential oversights. Ms. Ross has assured me that there are companies out there that can, that can handle the matter, because I do not want to burden staff and others. But I also don't want a company handling our paychecks that...
I'll leave it at that.
I had just simply asked them, could I see a table? If you, whatever, if you're this, or you're that, or you claim this, and they said, they provided me the table that is out on the internet that doesn't really tell me anything. They assume that if you make between $0 and $27,000 federal taxes, you're not taxed. Wait, wait a minute.
You can't make assumptions on people's taxes, especially when they fill out the proper paperwork.
But I don't, uh, so we're working on that. Our cash balances, right now, we have the ability to move about $15 million to VIP, which I do believe I'm going to do that tomorrow. The bank, they had promised that they would match what we've been getting with the VIP, and they have not done that. So I think I'll just go ahead and move it tomorrow. Because as you all are aware, benchmarking to the 90D T-bill rate, the VIP is still coming a little bit above that, which is phenomenal. However, the Town Bank sweep is dragging us down, but we'll fix that. And as I mentioned earlier, we're progressing through the RFP, so hopefully we'll finish up with that. And I think that's all I have right now, and we'll still be closing bank accounts. I figure we would do that when we move the RFP.
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman. I, I really do want to commend you as far as the audit's concerned. I, the, you know, we come sometimes to get the audit, and it seems like it's a matter of spending just a little bit of time. The auditor gets up, leaves, it's over and done with. But the work that goes into it to ensure that you get that type of report, I don't think is lost on any of us, so we, we really, really appreciate it.
And I want to thank the staff. They did a phenomenal job. I would think it, we were all done, and then we'd get a big email, and I'd say, help. And they would, they jumped right in, and were very helpful.
Well, if you've got good auditors, you go get big emails.
I used to dread looking at it with Bing, and I could not get in. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ross. Today, we have, finally, we have two invoices in excess of $20,000. The first is Civic Plus for website design, and then, of course, the second is to Robinson Farmer Cox for the audit just performed. Michael, can you update us on web, website design, where, where we stand with that?
Yes, sir. Right now, the website is scheduled to go live March 6. Staff has been doing training on the site as well as updating the various pages. They merged over what was on the existing site, and we've been in the process of getting those updated. So March 6 is the current scheduled date for the new Town website to go live.
Will this be the final bill for the website?
The total cost was $30,000, so I'll have to look and see if that's the first bill or the last bill. The total cost was, was $30,000.
Okay. Any other question on, on these two invoices? Here are none. We'll send these to council for consideration at our next meeting. Anything else come for finance today? Finance is adjourned.
Parks and Recreation Committee, members Councilman Gibbs, Vice Mayor Butler, and Councilman Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Zonya?
Thank you. So a couple of announcements of things going on at the park. The Windsor Castle Foundation met today for their monthly meeting, and they received 60% plans from Kimberly Horn for the master plan they're doing for the park. So that includes new play features, new portions of trail, picnic pavilions, permanent restrooms, and all kinds of great amenities. So we're looking forward to getting to a finished plan and then focus on fundraising for that, that particular board. We have a weather cam now located on the Windsor Castle Manor House, and it was on Wavy Ten this morning. They took the shot to show the weather there, and it's, it's a beautiful view, and I'm very proud to have it there. Our bridge renovation, folks, Athens Corp., the, the president, George, has offered to do a $25,000 donation towards the station bridge project. So that, that will go a long way, and it'll help us actually redirect funds to doing the kayak pier next. So eventually, we hope to do all the bridges and piers within the park. We are getting a second kayak kiosk, which will provide four more kayaks through the efforts of Judy Winslow. She received a grant. The folks that she had focused it towards, yeah, it didn't work out, so we get a second kayak kiosk. So we'll have a total of eight for people to rent, which will make patrons very happy. And then we had a controlled burn of the longleaf pine last Thursday. It went very well. The weather was a little windy, but it all worked out, and you can see the results out there right now. It worked exactly as intended, and the longleaf survived it, and they'll thrive based on that. The Luder Sports Building, the football building is out to bid, so if y'all know of any contractors, please tell them to go and see that on the Town website and get those bids in. And then just to note, we have our St. Patrick's Day Parade, which will close Main Street on Saturday, March 16. So that's approved at the Town manager level, so you won't see it as a resolution. Just want to make you aware, and the public aware, of that street closure. Any questions for me about any of the park facilities?
Just two comments, one minute. Three, the prescribed burn was fascinating. You know, I got to see some of my neighbors there. I didn't, I didn't know that they would actually show up to do it, but to learn about the science behind it is fantastic, and it's really great.
It's fascinating.
Number two, I was waiting for that second kayak kiosk, because I knew last year, when we voted it in, we're going to need another one.
Yes.
Good job, Judy.
I know. I'm so excited that Judy thought of us. I know, I'm so excited that Judy thought of us, because people will really be happy. That's, that's a lot, that's the amount of kayaks that we had when we were running rentals ourselves with staff.
Right, and then lastly, the weather cam, is there a way for the public to access that?
Yes, it's also on our town website, so you can link to it anytime. And I, I'm not sure if there's links that take you to the camera that's at the museum that focuses down Main Street, but I know the weather cam from the Manor House is there.
Got it, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Judy, again, thank you for pursuing the kiosk. So ask you not to stop there, we're gonna need a third kiosk real soon, so start looking for those funds.
I'll go get more money.
Awesome, awesome. Any other questions?
Mr. Gibbs, if I, if I may, just bring you up some business from earlier today, I have received an email back from Brandon Griffin and the VDOT group. So if Mr. Hess or Mr. Ryan are listening, good afternoon, Randy, thank you for the update. I've spoken to VDOT a few times regarding the issues you outlined below, which are the issues we discussed today previously, and they are supposed to be getting back to me soon with a determination. So VDOT has been followed up with one more time. So the citizen concerns that were brought for us today continue to be worked on, and I will stay on top of that with, with all the things we discussed today. Just wanna update you guys when I got it.
Thanks, Councilman Pack. Any other questions? That concludes Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is Public Buildings and Welfare. Members chairs, Vice Mayor Butler, Councilman Collins, and Councilman Pack.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman.
Yes, ma'am.
The first thing on the agenda is a public hearing, special use permit, three, four, seven, South Church Street.
Yes, thank you, good afternoon. The applicant is seeking to utilize multiple existing shipping containers as accessory structures. Due to the recent changes in our zoning ordinance, a special use permit is required. It is located in the Highway Retail Commercial District. One shipping container is currently being used as VDOT's office for the Cypress Creek Bridge Project. And then the additional shipping containers are being used to store materials and equipment for the project. This application is for the temporary use of shipping containers for a VDOT bridge project. However, it is not a by right use and does require the successful acquisition of a special use permit. At the Tuesday, February thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, this application was favorably recommended to Town Council for approval. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion about this special use permit? If not, we will move it along to a Town Council meeting for consideration. The second public hearing, special use permit, eighteen, four twenty, Battery Park Road.
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking approval for a special use per, permit in accordance with the zoning ordinance, Article three A C thirty-six. This is for a waiver of parking and loading requirements, this is to install approximately twelve additional gravel parking spaces. It's about four thousand four hundred and eighty square feet of gravel, and it will be located at the east side of the church and provide additional parking for the attendees. As part of the same project, the applicant did propose to pave the two entrances off of Battery Park Road. Because Article eight, parking and loading requires off-street parking to be constructed of an all-weather stabilized dust-free surface with curb, guttering, and drainage, the applicants must acquire a special use permit. The property already features gravel parking areas in the front of the church. Positive, this application will allow the applicant to provide additional parking spaces, however, it is not a by right use and does require an SUP. Town staff do suggest that any approval is contingent on the applicant's abiding by any comments received from Isle of Wight County Stormwater Division. At the Tuesday, February thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, this application was favorably recommended to Town Council. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
If I understood it at Planning, Planning Commission, that new construction needs, need, the rule is they have to pay. But because this is an existing structure, the gravel can be approved.
So we are bringing that discussion back to Planning Commission next month. The Planning Commission did indicate that what they wanted to address, the way that our ordinance addresses gravel parking. Right now, it does state that they would have to acquire a special use permit in order to get a waiver from complying with Article eight that requires the dust-free stabilized curb and gutter.
I might do have a question, Randy. What was y'all's discussion centered around as far as a gravel parking lot or paved parking lot?
So, this, this, this church is probably not the best example, because it's an existing gravel parking lot, and they needed a few additional spots, so it's probably not the best example of it. But Planning Commission has, has been pretty free to recommend waivers of our, of our paving requirement in town. We've done it several times over the last couple of years. And our discussion that we sent her is like, is this really the route we wanna go down, that we wanna waive parking? I mean, 'cause there's, there, I could cite several examples through town where we waived the, the requirement to pave. And, and that's, and maybe we do, and maybe we don't, but that, that's what the discussion we're, we're, we're looking to have is, is, you know, i- if it is something we're willing to waive, maybe we, we don't make it come up front of us, maybe it doesn't become a special use permit. In an instance where it is an existing building, like a church, or, 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 or not. Trying to give ourselves a better, when, when they did the donut, the...
Coffee?
Coffee place, the Coffee Cube. We allowed for gravel parking to go around the building, 'cause it was cost prohibitive to a small business, but they have a asphalt lot in the front. So we wanna get some consistency in, in our thoughts and our processes, so that we're fair and equitable across the board, and we can't say that, well, the Coffee Cube can do gravel, but for this church, we're gonna make you pave. 'Cause there's really no consistency in our answers and, and our decision-making process for that, and we'd like to try and improve upon that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll move this along for, to Town Council meeting for consideration. The third public hearing is a boundary line adjustment, and Attorney Riddick.
Yes, ma'am. It's already in the newspaper, there's a public hearing scheduled for your council meeting. The county of Isle of Wight has already had their public council, uh, public hearing and approved the agreement. You've seen the maps, they've been circulated, it's just a very small portion of the Molly Turner property on Turner Drive that would be more, the line will be more consistent with lines that we've established in the past. It follows the run of the branch instead of a, an artificial line that was already there, and that's it.
I do have a question. It'll be a public hearing at next Town Council meeting?
Next week.
Okay. A public hearing, and then we vote? Oh, okay. Number four, discussion item, request to rezone county property. And I know that this is a request that we asked of the county, and the county denied the request. So, and I, I've had a couple of conversations with people about that particular area, so, Michael?
Yes, ma'am. As you may recall, sometime back, council asked me to write a letter to the county and asking them to consider applying for a rezoning to rezone the River View Park parcel to our Conservation District. Their board did take that matter up, and they had some concerns because some of the existing uses on the property would require a special use permit to continue to exist. Specifically, that parcel encompasses the YMCA, the, that entire old hi, high school building, so all of those uses are on the same parcel. And they had concerns about that rezoning taking place and what it would do as far as those uses in their future. So they declined to make that request. I know there's been some conversations since then about that if we were able to address those issues, they may consider it. They've also indicated that they have no intentions of selling or developing the property at this time. So this is just a place for us to talk about it and see what direction council wants us to take.
Can I ask for some feedback from planning?
Well, I...
If it fall under your auspices, well...
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm...
You and Tammy, basically, some feedback.
I'm, I'm happy to give you some thought process on it. When we asked the county to rezone this property, 'cause they have to rezone, those areas are asked for the rezoning, we can't rezone it, the thought process is that we keep kind of a pocket park in, in the middle of that neighborhood, and that we don't wanna develop. There was some consideration given several months ago about selling off part of that property, that the county would sell off that part of the property. If that property were sold, as it is currently zoned as DNR, Downtown Neighborhood Residential. So what you see along James Street and Carey Street and Washington Street will be applicable to development as a by right development. DNR is a very dense development that we already have in town with, with, with small lot sizes and setbacks, and it's very appropriate for a historic downtown. We had asked this because we thought as development happened around there, particularly with the Grange and some of the other things coming, that we didn't really want to see this pocket park, for, for, for lack of a better term, designated as anything but. So the county says, "Well, we're not gonna sell it." Well, that's true, and I, I take them at their word, but the next board may have better ideas, or different ideas, or, or other ideas, and the next council may have other ideas. So we would, we would like to see it rezoned as something that's protective. 'Cause at the very least, it would have to go through a rezoning before it could ever be developed. So that, that was a thought process on it. Tammy is gonna be able to speak much better to the, the special use requirements that, that we would have to apply to it, or if they were, I mean, so, so I'll let her do that.
Right, so if you look at the attachment that I provided, I broke it down with the DNR and the by right use, which is the public parks. However, libraries and public schools and colleges are an SUP item in DNR. So right now, it's just a non-conforming use that has been grandfathered in under that zoning designation. For our community conservation, public parks, public schools, and colleges are both by right. However, libraries and public recreation and leisure establishments, which would be the YMCA, are under an SUP. Then I went ahead and broke it down into those four categories. So you have the libraries, which explain the zoning designation and whether or not it's an SUP and, or by right. The same for public parks, public schools, and then public recreation and leisure, which is currently only listed in community conservation as a special use permit item.
So what is the consensus of Town Council? Mayor Bowman?
Well, county's pretty much given us some assurance that it's not...
There's nothing you can do.
Yeah, that's it.
You can't...
That's, that's, that's what I'm getting to, that, you know, they've given us assurances that they're not gonna do anything that's detrimental to what we are desiring, but except this, as Mr. Riddick says, nothing, at this point, we can do, I guess, other than, it's not...
Well, what, what we could do, I'm not saying what we should do, but what we could do is we could change our zoning designation to allow the by right use to community conservation, and that would be the, oh, I'd have to look at, what, what Tammy just said in her piece here.
Libraries and public recreation and leisure?
Yeah, so, so we would have to add those to community conservation as a by right use. At that point, if we did that, we could request the county again to rezone the property, and Supervisor Roundtree suggested they would be favorable to it at that point. That's what we can do if we wish to do so.
At this juncture, is it worth it?
They could rezone it to community conservation with, can't they? 'Cause there's, there's, there, those are not conditional uses in CC, are they?
Correct. I, I informed them that when we rezoned the property to community conservation, at the same time, we would apply for a special use permit in order to accommodate the library.
But are they special uses permitted in that zoning district?
In community conservation.
They are, then?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's a really simple, they just, perhaps they didn't understand. It could be zone CC, and contemporaneously, they could have a special use permit that permitted all the things that they want, that they're doing by right now. So maybe they just didn't understand.
Perhaps.
Question, but if we do that, and say hypothetically, they wanted to expand the YMCA, or expand the library, would they then be permitted under that existing conditional use to expand those uses?
Yes. The use, the use covers the whole property.
Well, they wouldn't need out the permission, would they? Because that's town, that's, that's county property.
Doesn't matter, it's, the town controls the zoning.
Planning Commission would be responsible for reviewing a site plan amendment.
But that would be the case anyhow. So you, they could do it, they could, if they would agree to the community conservation and contemporaneously apply for a special use permit for all the things that they're already doing, it would work. And it wouldn't have any long-term negative impact on the property.
It's been a non-issue all these years, I'm more inclined to just leave it.
As a non-issue, it was an issue. You know? If you wanna protect your parks, you better do it while you can. I mean, we can ask them to do what, what Attorney Riddick said, and they could say no, or we don't ask them, and it's a no. So, but, I mean, I'm, I'm a little impartial, I'm understanding your point, but zoning's in place to protect your properties, is what you, is what we have as a right. And that doesn't mean that a future council cannot change that zoning, 'cause they would, they, but they would have to do so in order to have it ever develop. I mean, there's a lot of what ifs, your probabilities get out there. Like I said, I thought it was worthy of a discussion item, and that's what we're doing.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Riddick, have, have you had any conversations with the county?
No, no.
Thank you.
So I guess we've had the discussion with it, I, I guess my question is, how do we want to move forward with it, or do we want to move forward with it? Or what is our next step?
There's only two options. We accept the decision, or we, we ask Michael to speak to Mr. Keaton and say, "Hey, would you rezone the property, community conservation, and, and apply for these special use permits at the same time?"
Is that one of the things that they, the county was aiming to do?
I don't know. They know if the zoning was correct, that they, they didn't have a big deal with it according to Supervisor Roundtree, but, so, I mean, there, there's two options here. Either we, we accept the decision, or we said, "Hey, do you mind looking at it this way?"
Well, could we do this? Ms. Roundtree will be, not at this meeting, but she will be at our next meeting. Maybe give her a heads up and ask her to please report back to, if, number one, if they understood to begin with, because there's some questions as far as clarity is concerned. Number two, ask her what she believes the mechanics are as far as achieving it, and then Vice Mayor Butler, you and I can, again, I...
Well, we...
Like I said, Mike, Mike made a good point, it's not a problem until it is a problem, and some others said that too.
Well, she'll be at our meeting next week, and then their meeting is not until the following week.
I don't think, I think she's not gonna be at this meeting, if she...
Well, somebody will be here, woman.
I don't know.
Nobody's gonna come and interrupt anybody's question. Okay, then whenever she's here, we'll propose it to her, and then she can take it back, and we'll get a response from there.
And somebody will, so she's not blindsided, somebody will know ahead of time that she's gonna be asked questions.
Well, is this about blindsiding her?
Well, maybe that's the wrong term, I just, I, I wanted her to be prepared to maybe be in a position to answer the question, not just informatively, but also maybe with some, as far as what the remainder of the board is maybe thinking, maybe she can have some dialogue as far as that's concerned, but...
Okay. Well, we've had a discussion about the request to rezone the county's property, and we've decided what form of action we wanna take the next time. So we will, you know, familiarize Supervisor Roundtree with it, and she can take it back to the board, and they can get back with us, like, how do we feel about the second request? Number five. Number four, number five, discussion item, proposed street name changes.
Yes, ma'am, I, if you don't mind, I'll proceed first with that, and you will recall, Carter Williams was mayor here for twelve years, served on council, I can't remember how many years. I was gonna get the resolution that they used for him for Citizen of the Year, he's also been Citizen of the Year, Lifetime Firefighter of the Year, just done a lot as far as the community's concerned. And I'd initially thought that, that we should do something to honor his, his lifetime services to the, to the town of Smithfield. I'd initially mentioned to a few folks about maybe changing kayak law, or the kayak... I'd initially mentioned to, uh, a few folks about maybe changing kayak law, or the kayak name in Windsor Castle Park, because Windsor Castle was so important to him, all the renovations that he did. I think a lot of times free of charge. And just some way to honor not just he, and I'll get to the next person. I'll let Vice Mayor Bu- Butler speak as well to that point, but, um, after speaking with Amy, um, it seems the kayak launch needs to probably remain kayak launch, because it's a directional type sign, and people need to know where to go to rent a kayak. But the trails that he worked on as a trail doctor, things like that. I, uh, I would like this council to consider naming the trails through Windsor Castle Park after Carter. I think he, uh, he provided a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of work, and a lot of things as far as his town is concerned. I think it's important that, that we remember his legacy, like we have some other mayors that have provided significant public service to the town. The other person, uh, other idea, idea that we came up with is, uh, uh, for whom this, this council chamber's name uh, is, is, uh, Mayor Chapman. Mayor Chapman's been many, many years in this town, providing dedicated service, care, empathy, uh, and, and, and hard work. And my idea, and I've discussed it with vice mayors, over in Lakeside Heights, there's a street called Quail Street, and that kind of borders where James lived for many, many years. And, um, I would, I would like for council to maybe consider changing Quail Street to, uh, to Chapman Way or Chapman Lane or something like that. So I've, I've, that's the way I feel. I think it's, um, regardless of what some folks may think, one way or the other, as far as it goes, you cannot ignore the amount of public service that both of these fine citizens put in as far as this town's concerned. And I'll yield to, to Vice Mayor Butler as far as, because this is kind of a, a collective idea. Vice Mayor?
Um, I, I think you did a good explanation of it. Uh, I, I do know that, uh, their nephews, um, had approached me and wanted to do something in his honor. Um, and the first suggestion that they had, um, based on some little fact finding that I did, did not go over very well. So I, I think that he warrants a, a street being named in his honor. He was the longest-serving mayor, as well as the longest-serving town council person. Um, he had been responsible, uh, for that, uh, Baverly Park, uh, that Rising Star Community, when they bought the water through there. Even the block program with Lakeside Heights and Old Jersey Park. Um, you know, as you noted, the chamber is named after him. I think he warrants, uh, something being done in his honor. Um, you know, I, I do have a question about, I understand the Carter situation, uh, with kay- kayak row or kayak lane being, um, directional.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the paths in the park now currently named?
They are not.
How would we do that?
We would add a placard to the station markers, which there's 26 of them. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I, and I know that Carter loves that park.
He does.
And I think it's a wonderful idea. Um, I don't want to say memorialize him, but to honor him, but that, that he's still living. Um, you know, something at Windsor Castle Park in his honor, I, I think would be fantastic.
Ms. Chapman, just, just one question on, on the Quail Street. Does that, there's no doubt Mr. Chapman needs to be honored, Mayor Chapman needs to be honored. Does it cause any issues with the residents on Quail Street as far as mail addresses, or, or when you start changing somebody's address? What are the unintended consequences there?
Um, street name in his honor had come to me from someone else, but it, what, they mentioned, um, Church Manaway. Um, I had a conversation with Tammy to find out what was involved with that. I'm thinking, oh, my God, no. That's a lot of address changes, uh, emergency services, I, you know, I don't know how many residents are out there. You know, my first thought was Hillcap, Hillcrest, um, Drive, only because that's where his street, his house is. And there is only one family that's affected there, and I had a conversation with them. Um, I had a conversation with Mayor Bowman, and he recommended Quail Street, which is a longer street. Personally, I don't think the people in that area would have a problem, but I'm willing to actually survey them to see how they feel about it.
The reason, the rationale with myself as far as Quail Street was concerned is if you do Hillcrest, Hillcrest is not very visible at all to anyone. If you do Quail Street, Quail Street is the entrance. You see it when you go by Great Spring Road or whatever, and they've, there, there's mechanisms to, to do that, and that, I don't think it's ten houses.
I don't think it's that many families. Uh, I don't think it will affect that many people.
I'll support whatever your recommendation is. I just wanted to bring that to our attention, make sure that we thought through.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause that's changing the addresses for people who've had, it's where their socials, I mean, everything is tied to your address. And for people, if, if they're elderly and they've been there a long time, they, I mean, you just need to find that. I mean, if they don't object to it, then that's fine, but you're putting a big administrative burden on those people if you change their address.
Well, I'm open for another, um, street. I'm open for another suggestion.
How many people on that street, Vice Mayor?
I don't know exactly. I, I would.
Twenty-two, I just counted on, twenty-two would be affected on Quail Street.
These new developments coming in, just like the ones that, where you, behind, um, um, over there by the, um, the Luda Acres, whatever you wanna call it, yeah, Luda Acres, whatever you wanna call it. Are there new streets going in there? I knew that Clay Street is gonna be extended.
Mike, I understand Luda Acres is not active anymore.
No, it's.
No, it's.
It was just resolved.
He just stopped, but I think that's gonna start again.
Well, it doesn't have to be Luda Acres. It could be somewhere else that we have a development in that could have that, then the new residents have that.
That's a good idea.
Have, or already have that. It could be a bigger street. It could be more elaborate than just Quail Street. Uh, it would already be established, and you'd, you'd get your answer then, so you wouldn't have to worry about disrupting everybody's.
I'm open to whatever council had.
I, I think it's a great idea. I just was thinking it could be grandioser than, than it is.
I'm also a little bit sentimental, too.
Sure, yeah.
And I know that enforcement, they just named a street after Missy Elliott, not, not long ago. That was an existing street. Right now, they're getting ready to name, and Newport News, they're gonna be naming a street after Allen Iverson. And it's not really in a new construction area.
Right. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support whatever you, whatever you decide, absolutely.
Which, Bill, do we have to have a public hearing when this, when we send it into consent agenda?
You don't have to have a public, you can change the street, you can, I mean, you want to. But there's consequences to doing it, for people, for people who live there.
We understand.
Oh, I know that, Bill, and I wouldn't want us to do it to make a change either. That was why I, you know, I just read the comments. That was why I didn't then consider Church Manaway would be a, the suggestion, because it's even more family. Say, um, Tammy, if you can give me those addresses, I am willing to at least do the research to see how they feel about it. And if there's a problem, then, Mike, I think that that's a wonderful idea.
Are you able to leave the Quail Street signage with a placard underneath of it that says James Chapman Way? So it has a dual.
What significance would that be? Cause people would still have to do a change of address.
They would.
So I don't know how that would work with US Postal Service.
I'm not sure.
I don't think so, not if, no, not if you put a plaque up under it. Um, you could do, you could do that without changing it, because the primary address would still be, would still be Quail Street.
Quail Street would be at the top, and then his placard right underneath of it, just as large, but.
Put it right off to the side, right beside it. Um, the reason I know is my wife went to Ohio State, and there's a sign up there that's their main drag, but also it says undisputed way on the side of it for football stuff, but yeah, I've seen that sign.
Well, since it's, excuse me, since it's a discussion item, Randy, that's the exact fear I had. It was like, when you change an address, and some of these people could have been there for 50 years, and everything you have is tied to that address, what all is involved, what, what are the unintended consequences gonna be in doing that? And I, I agree with you. I totally support what, what, uh, this initiative is, and I, and we, we really should do something. Um, but, you know, since it's open for discussion, then, then let's keep discussing it.
Tammy has a sample here of Avenue of the Arts in Newport News. Jake Clyde Morris.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah. And the sign is just as big a text as the street sign, so it's very visible, but it retains its name as address, or retains the address name.
Well, that's not that would be an applicable solution to it then.
I, I don't know, but of one street that's been, name has been changed in Smithfield, and it was Pretty Avenue.
Where?
Pretty Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, that was, it's now called River Road.
That was the only one I knew, too.
One house.
No, Gay Street went to Azalea as well.
Is that right? Okay. Well, that's the only one I knew about, but that was just one house, and it was a new tenant, so.
And see, that was why I.
Yeah.
Suggested.
And, and, well, the other thing, the caveat about that was, the owner had promised to do something about the pretty name because it was a significant historical name in town Smithfield. I haven't seen any of that done in the future. I don't know where that name went to, or whether it got recognized otherwise. But it, that was the only one I know that got changed. Personally, I know.
Tammy, can we check in the other adjusted plaque or signage or whatever it is, uh, to see how that would work?
To that point, though, Ms. Butler, it's not quite the same as having a placard up there. It is a street named in his honor. It's, it's not quite the same.
Okay, I'm going to check with the twenty-two families.
Here, here.
And if there's opposition to that, then the next thing that we could consider is street name. Um, you know, and, and that would have to be a mutual agreement with the developer, wouldn't it? I mean, because the Grange, they named their own streets.
Oh, yes, yes.
So it would have to be a mutual agreement. So that's what I'll do first, and I'll get back with the, uh, town council.
I don't think that would be a hard sale.
When's the council?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that would be a hard sale, considering what, uh, Mr. Chapman meant to the community. It wouldn't be a hard sale at all to a new developer when you tell them the historical, uh, significance behind wanting to name a street after Mr. Chapman.
Okay, moving to number six. Question, back to number five. Um, the naming the trails and Mayor Williams' name, we're able to move forward with that. Will we vote on that in the next town council meeting, or is that still discussed?
Anytime you want to, you just.
But that's our problem.
That's your, yes, absolutely.
So do we want to vote on that at the upcoming town council meeting?
Put it on the consent agenda if you would.
Okay. We will move, uh, the renaming of the trails, um, at Windsor Castle Park after, uh, Mayor Carter Williams. Uh, we'll leave this item to the, for approval at the next town council meeting.
What will we name them?
Huh?
Carter Williams Trail, is that, is that?
T. Carter Williams Trail System. That's my.
What was the name?
T. Carter Williams Trail System.
Okay. Would that be in addition to the station markers, or will we put something on the station marker?
We'll put a regular station marker, number, designation, yeah.
Oh, okay.
A little placard.
Oh, okay. I don't think that's visible enough.
You know, they should.
Well.
I'll come up with other ideas.
Oh, okay. Number six is the, is a discussion item, Gray Street Repaving Project, and Michael, that's you.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, you know, we have talked a couple of times that the Gray Street entire corridor is gonna have to be milled and overlaid, and VDOT has that currently scheduled to happen this summer. Um, and we have heard from especially some of those businesses that are on the end of Gray Street, closest to Main, uh, with some concerns about that and how that may impact their business. Uh, we received one from Mr. Joey Pickers, who runs the physical therapy place. Uh, that was emailed out to everybody and included in your packet. We've also heard from the folks at Cooper Auto. So wanted to have a discussion. We have talked with VDOT, and, and VDOT is looking for council to kind of take a position on whether we want them to continue down the schedule they're down now, or if we would like for them to try to push that project out till after the bridge is completed. Um, you know, if we do it now, clearly it's gonna have a significant impact on traffic, especially when it's already heavy, heavy on Gray Street. Um, if we do it after, it just prolongs how long people are impacted in that area, but in theory, it, it may not be as significant of an impact because the bridge will be back open. Uh, VDOT seems willing to work with us on whichever option the town prefers. Um, but we wanted to have a discussion with council to see if there was a preference among council before we told them one way or the other.
Okay, discussion. Jim?
Quick question. How, how long is the plan for the Gray Street project?
The project would last no more than two months. Um, the way the contract is written, they would start as soon as schools are out, and they have to be finished before schools open back up. Uh, they, they think that it would take no more than two months.
And is there any?
But it would have at least one lane of Gray Street closed, uh, during much of that work, because they're having to mill down eighteen inches and then redo the base and then repave.
And is there any financial constraints on, on VDOT? On, does, does that many, does that money die after so long for the project, or does it go away? No?
They have the, they have told us that they have the capability of delaying that contract if we need to.
I didn't make sense.
We, we've been waiting for this to get paid for probably five years now, so I think if we, what's the big weight, what's the hurry? I mean, the street's in bad shape anyway. I think that helps slow traffic down. So I, I think delay it would be the right thing to do, cause we've already got problems with traffic. I see it. I mean, but I leave early in the morning and come back at a different way, so I'm not affected by it, but everybody else is. I know the people that work at Luda's, on Luda Drive and come up that way. For Smithfield Foods, they're, all, and anybody in town is deeply affected by it, so any other delay would just be a nightmare in my situation.
It's like Michael said, we either, we either make the, the pain longer by two months, so put on the end of the bridge, or make the pain really bad for two months. I, I, I like the idea of putting it at the end and asking them to, to delay it.
Any more comments?
Yes, ma'am. I'm caught between a rock and a hard place, cause I live on Gray Street. And the people that, um, started reaching out to me and started sending the emails, the business owners, um, two of the residents are here. I, I don't, there, there is no right answer. Let, let's get it done right now, or let's wait a year and a half and get it done afterwards. Mr. Smith is exactly right, that we've been waiting on this for at least four years, I know. And it has to be done. It is in terrible shape. But when you see traffic trying to get out of town at rush hour, which thankfully is over now, traffic's backed up Grace. Um, past their houses, past my house, and Main Street is, is, is even worse. Now, again, school was in session, so they wanted to do this. I think that the initial date was June 16th, um, to start prepping, prepping the roads. And, you know, I'm, are, are the business owners gonna be upset, or are the residents gonna be upset, or is the town gonna be upset? I don't know. I mean, I, I, I don't know. But I, I got this added to the agenda so that we could talk about it, because it is a big deal. We've got a little bit of time to, to continue to talk about it, and, you know, reversing traffic on the bridge, I think that is absolutely impossible. Uh, VDOT has said it's impossible. If you look at one side of the bridge, you know, you got the big old holes now where they're replacing the concrete, and then to switch it, and we just heard from our EMS folks, have it the one way, we voted that, and it, and it was the right thing to do. Um, you know, if I'm having a heart attack, I don't wanna have to wait for an ambulance to decide, is it one way or two ways or whatever? And, and that delay would be terrible. So I, I really don't know what the answer is, and I'm, I'm gonna keep soliciting advice. I, I really don't know what the answer is, and I'm, I'm gonna keep soliciting advice from people, but I, I think it's a big enough deal, fortunately, I don't have to drive during rush hour at all, so I, I just avoid it, um, but just one, one real quick scenario, my Rotary Club is at, uh, Red Point Tower, Tap House, and normally it takes me about fifty-five seconds, it takes me one minute to get from my house there when the bridge is open. I had to leave during rush hour, um, to be at a five o'clock meeting, left my house, took me twenty-four and a half minutes to get to Red Point, should take one minute, so, okay, so that's just, that's just an inconvenience to me, that's not a big deal, but people with families, people, Kofers, one hundred percent, that, you know how many cars they, they service a day? The physical therapy place, I mean, those are people that are, that are hurt, and they're going there for physical therapy, where, how are they gonna get there? So I just, I felt like this was warranted to, to, to get it on the agenda, um, to talk about, and I, I appreciate everybody listening, I don't have an answer right now, and I know none of you do either.
So I, I spoke with Mike, and we had a similar conversation, um, why not we survey those that most affected and see what they wanna do? And it takes it out of our hands, and they can actually pick what's, what they think is best, and we go with what those most affected, we go with what they wanna do.
Good advice.
That's what I was gonna ask, but also, so are you saying that it's potentially the people on Gray Street, the condition of Gray Street is, is so bad that they'll, they're willing to put up with, possibly put up with the pain of worse traffic? I just don't know, I, I just haven't-
Some will, some won't.
Okay, I just haven't seen that part of it.
But, but, but that goes right along with what Tom from Gibbs just said, let's ask them, see what they have to say, but, but I don't, also don't wanna make a town decision based on one street, however, that is a very, very crucial ingress egress right now becau- because of the station, uh, bridge, uh, construction.
But I think we are gonna make it based on one street, 'cause that's who it's going, it's going to affect mostly, is, is that traffic going along that street, if, if you're gonna affect that traffic on that street, it's gonna affect everybody coming through there, so it is really making a decision on that one street.
Okay. I, I'll tell you what I'll do in the meantime, is I'll poll the, the neighbors on the street, um, and I can continue to solicit, uh, from, from the other, uh, business owners and at Hallwood's place, I, I think he's got three or four other, uh, businesses in there as well, um, and, and again, thi- this is not about a Jeff Brooks issue, this is about a, a real traffic snafu that we have going on, um, that's a major concern, that, that's knocking on our door in four months or so, so.
Well, as I recall, one of the reasons, and I'm not, I don't wanna gore anybody else's ox or whatever, but the, as I recall, this project in and of itself, Michael helped me out, was delayed at one point because of monetary issues, was that correct?
Yes, sir, originally it was supposed to be done, um, last summer, and because it came in over budget, they did have to delay it.
Okay, so we're gonna delay this for another, or potentially, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just throwing this out there, you're gonna delay this for another year and a half to two years while we wait on the bridge to get repaired, what do you think the cost factor would be in two years as far as this project is concerned? To add to that-
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Sure, go ahead, Michael.
Definitely, yeah, I was just gonna say, when I talked to VDOT earlier, um, it, it was last week, um, they seemed prepared to push it out if that was council's decision, they were pretty much going to do whatever council felt was the right option, um, but there's no doubt that, you know, whatever time they push it out to, it, it will have some sort of money.
Well, sure, they go, sure, you can push it out, but then at the end of the out period, are you gonna be able to pave the roadway? That's, I, that's what concerns me a little bit, I, and again, Jeff, and all due respect to your, to your folks there, I don't, I, do what, do whatever y'all ultimately decide is fine, but it just worries me, again, having the benefit of working in government, I, I know sometimes that, you know, what, a lot, a lot of what people aren't seeing here is, although these are terrible inconveniences, this is the product of the fact that the state has cash now to do these, do these projects, so although it's a terrible inconvenience, there is a good side to it, but what, how do you factor the two in that makes it palatable? But that's, that's honestly, that's where we are, we're here discussing this because the state has cash to, to fix these things in our, in our little town, and the good news is we're not getting ignored, so, um, I, I honestly, I, but leave it up to y'all, I think if you wanna, if you wanna poll it, fine, but do not be surprised in two years or whatever, it gets delayed another two years, that's my one concern.
I'll add this to it as well, um, first off, I think it's a common sense approach is probably not to tear up this street while there's so much traffic, when government's often accused of not having common sense, and we should probably exercise common sense here when we have the opportunity to. At the end of this, of the, this, the South Church Street Bridge, the station bridge project, uh, VDOT has a project out on Route Ten as well, that'll be, uh, widening the right-hand turn lanes onto Main Street at Ten, and that project is scheduled, uh, right at the end of the station bridge project, VDOT promised not to do that project at the same time as a, as a South Church Street Bridge project, so if you push Gray Street to that, you, you may be butting up against another project as well, so as long as all facts are on the table, we just need to understand that, you know, to, that, that there's lots of construction going on downtown, um, anyhow, whatever.
Good point.
And there's still the possibility, there's a project out there to widen South Church Street from the bridge all the way to town bank, that's still out there, too.
With the bike track.
With the bolted use path. So, anyway, with a, sooner or later, you're gonna have to, I'd come to consensus and let VDOT know sooner than later, because I, you know, school will be out here for long, so. Any, anybody else have any comments, questions, opinions?
Oh, I, I, well, no, I'd like to go back to this discussion, so what is our consensus? What do we want Michael to do?
I think there's gonna be, aren't you gonna go and check with your neighbors?
Yeah, let me just, let me just poll some people, and, you know, if, if everybody on Gray Street says, hey, delay it a year and a half, then I'll-
It sounds like a delay may be longer than that, based on what Randy just shared.
It could be.
Not necessarily, but I just, there is other construction going on in the same slated for the end of the bridge construction.
Well, the thing, if VDOT has committed to doing that after the Cypress Creek, it could potentially be even longer.
Could be.
I think they've committed to pushing it off until then, that's, the, the, the art is in listening to what they're actually, they don't mind putting it off, but just because they put it off does not necessarily mean they're gonna do it then, that's the, that's what worries me a little bit.
That, to, to the mayor's point, if they're here with money, willing to do it, you take their money and you get it done, that's not necessarily a common sense approach to a, a, a traffic problem that have eased a little bit.
So I think some of the conversation with the, uh, the people that you survey, they need to know all of the options, like, hey, look, if we get it fixed now, then you don't have to deal with the terrible road situation, if not, then you gotta deal with the consequences of the road, so pick your poison, uh, pick your medicine.
I'm sure quite a few are listening now, so.
Well, and we also take the risk, we're not even sure about what the funding is gonna be eighteen months from now.
I understand.
I agree.
All right, thanks for listening.
Okay, Jeff, we'll wait to give you, Jeff, uh, to make it, well, to, for Michael to move forward.
Sure.
I hope VDOT hasn't given us the time limit to get back with them.
Anything else come before council committee at this time? Always a pleasure, CEO, those watching remotely, thank you for participating, thanks to those in the audience, meeting is adjourned.